Yes. Kim Sears Hacker.
Here.
Isaiah Crowe.
Here.
And I'm here.
I have proof of posting. Will you join me for the closing? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Here. Motion to adjourn now. Do a second. Any changes, corrections, and so on such forth. Hearing none. All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Do I have the motion to approve the meeting minutes from June 22nd? You have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any corrections? Hearing none. Jim?
Steve Stain.
James? Sandy? Cindy? Kim?
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll go yes as well. I have a motion to approve the payroll accruals and disbursements. Thank you. Discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yeah.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll go yes as well.
Don't have a lot. Football's starting their, they've got their camp tonight. Just kind of a note for everybody. I'm working on the same thing we did last year, which is Heat for Heroes. Hopefully the September 11th home game. So we'll be trying to promote that and raise some proceeds for veterans that are having issues being able to afford heat. Watch for that. Got, the Gridiron Club is doing their golf outing, that's on Sunday. So if anybody hasn't signed up and wants to, you got, till about 10 o'clock tonight, tell me that you've got a team. Isaiah?
That's cool.
Yeah. That's all I got.
Mark?
I think because everybody here at State Budge was assigned yesterday, 104 vetos, we're still getting information regarding what the impact is in Wisconsin. They have the break in state vetos, so not open to take stuff out, but you can, uh, so. So hopefully we'll be able to have an update for you maybe on the 27th. As you can tell, we're hopeful that the pavement project would start last Friday. DNR is still reviewing plans. In constant communication with HSR. So hopefully I'll get some information. What I heard last week was they would get back to us by Tuesday, meeting tomorrow, so. Also, next board meeting, Aaron, Scott and I, and now Dan Perkins, since he's on board. We've been working on a phone project, evaluating upgrades. If you remember, five years ago, we did a, we worked with a group and Krieger was the corporation or the IT group that we worked with to redo our phones. The project cost 26,000 and we saved 26,000 every year. So paid for itself within one year. But our system is antiquated. We also have an opportunity. Our system is called Iwatsu. They are getting out of the game of phones. So Krieger still is working with them for the next couple of years. So they're interested in buying back our equipment and have a discount project. So looking at a couple of options, we'll bring that to you. Again, this is for 2016, summer 2016, so I'm planning to have good things going on about here. That's all I have.
Alright. No public input? Alright. Discuss possible action to approve student trip to Spain in 2016.
So Mike Williams here, a Spanish teacher, and he's going to take you. They do have the itinerary, has submitted everything, but go ahead, take them through. Thanks for coming.
So the first thing under, or one of the first things under PAG there is an explanation of the trip. Obviously, our goal is to, you know, make one of the highlights of the Spanish program and specifically the Spanish club on this trip. As a reward for their kids, to the kids for all their hard work. And so there's a brief explanation there, and I believe it jumps into cost. The cost there is obviously subject to change. None, we haven't paid for anything yet, so these are all just best estimates. And those are student costs, including the cost of chaperones. Not all of the chaperone cost, but approximately 80% of it. And so that's, yeah, I'll give you a minute to just look at that. Oh, I get, oh, yeah, that's my idea, yeah. And item D there under, under the cost, it says ESN Santiago, and that is the organization that we're going to be working with, that I have been working with, which we'll explain a little bit later, but I'll explain that in a minute. Additional expenses there, it says passport, which some of the kids already have, and then food and souvenirs, that's all going to be extra. That's just dependent on the kid. I am going to give them the option to make a deposit into the club's account, and then we could, for those students, I could pay for their meals with the school's credit card, as opposed to them having to carry a lot of cash. Some people express some concerns about that. So they'll have that option, but that will be an additional cost to them. If anybody has any questions at any point, just stop me.
Like the ESN Santiago, is that the lodging?
Yeah, that's, it's a local organization there. And basically, they are, they've set up an itinerary and they're taking care of all of our lodging, things like that, and transportation while we're there. Number four, dates, says there that they are subject to change by up to two days, depending on flight costs. Typically, when you look at flights, you know, if you move just a few days, either way, you can end up saving quite a bit. The dates that we have here are Friday and Sunday, two of the most popular days to fly, so that tends to be more expensive. So it's likely that it'll shift a little bit. But our hope is to keep it as the 17th as our end date and no later than that. Because we don't want to come back in the middle of the school week. And I think band has something going on, I think on Tuesday, something like that. I know I had said something at our calendar meeting, so we really, that'll be the, you know, we'll be coming back that day, for sure, if not earlier. Obviously, I'll be the main supervisor, and as it says there, I'll be accompanied by two chaperones, including at least one female, both of whom are yet to be determined. We're just gonna, we wanted to make sure that the trip was approved before we dealt with who the chaperones would be. Okay, so ESN Santiago, so a little bit more explanation of what they are. Would you guys like to, to read it, or should I just give it over?
Just give it over.
So like I said, it's a, it's a organization, a volunteer organization that is there. They have a pretty extensive network there in 36 different countries, and this is just one branch of the organization. And so knowing a little bit about the organization from when I was living, where we're going, I got in touch with them and they set up an itinerary for us, which we'll go through in a minute. And they are coordinating all of our lodging, transportation, and to some extent, the sites that we went at, we sort of worked together. I had some suggestions, they had some suggestions, and so we looked out an itinerary for the trip. What they will be providing while we're there are two chaperones the first week that we're there, when we're doing sort of day trips and a couple of overnights. So we'll have two of them there, and then on the second half of the trip, they'll have one. So that's also very, I think it's going to be very, very helpful. One thing that I did want to make sure and mention there, the second paragraph under number six, it says our sleeping arrangements will likely include hostels. Just to sort of, there was some concern about what a hostel is and what that looks like. Hollywood sort of has one depiction of that, but just so that we're all on the same page. The hostel that we will be staying at have rooms that you can buy the whole room. So for example, if they're, you know, we're taking eight students and we have four or five chaperones, we can buy two whole rooms or three whole rooms that are just for us. You know, four beds in a room or something, or five beds in a room, so it's, it's just us. It's not that we're going to be in a room with 45 other people that we don't know. That was definitely a concern to the kids and the parents and myself, and so, yeah. Really, the only difference between these hostels and a hotel that we would stay at are the extra amenities. You know, there probably won't be a mini fridge or a couch or anything like that, it's just a room with beds. So that's where we're at.
And, and shared bedrooms?
Typically, yeah. Sometimes you, you know, they, they'll have like one bathroom for a couple of rooms or something like that. It sort of depends on the hostel, but yeah, that is generally shared.
Do you have any idea how many students we're almost likely to have?
Currently, we have eight that are committed financially. I would be surprised if we made it to 12. I think 10 is, you know, I wouldn't be surprised if we, if we got 10 kids, there are a couple that are on the fence and are, you know, seem pretty interested about it. So, yeah, that's where we're at right now.
Will your chaperones change, number of chaperones change if your students increase?
Uh, I mean, if it increases drastically, yes. You know, if we got to 20, then probably, but I think with, you know, 10 or 12, I still think that three of us plus two from ESN, I think five, you know, that'd be, that's quite a few chaperones.
So you say eight are committed financially. Are you doing anything to help them raise money to go, or?
Yep. So we've been, we've been fundraising for the last two years, and we will continue until we go. So we are doing basketball concessions. Currently, we're in the middle of three broad skins at the shoebox, craft fair. We had a garage sale last year, we may do that again this year. We're sort of, you know, we explore all options, I guess.
So anything individuals can do to, you know, raise money based on their sales or something?
We've, we've been approached by a few, you know, I mean, just teachers, you know, and people who are heads of the clubs get stuff in the mail about, you know, like selling candy and things like that. I talked to the kids, I said, you know, I would, I would support whatever they wanted to do. No one really expressed interest in doing those things, just because the, you know, bang for your buck, so to speak, is a lot less than, than we make. For instance, you know, on the broad stands, even though, you know, those aren't a ton of money, it's one day of work and you get a few hundred dollars versus a few weeks of work for the same amount of money.
So do you do a broad sale? Do you divide that between the number of kids going?
So I do it based on the number of hours that they work. You know, if they work a full day, they get one day's worth of credit. If they work a half day, they get a half day's worth of credit. And so basically, we've got this big pot, and the more days that the kids work, the bigger piece of the pot they get.
And you're sure these eight will get to that total?
So the, we have one student who's already over our total, who's done a lot of fundraising. There are for sure two, I think, possibly three, that are going to fundraise the whole cost of the trip. But the others likely will not, because we've had four come in in just the last, like, six months. And so they haven't had a lot of opportunities to fundraise. They're starting now, but it's likely that most of them will probably fundraise at least a thousand each. And they're willing to obviously put the bill for the rest. All the students have been making deposits already, that's what I meant when I say committed financially. We took a $500 deposit from everyone going. And then depending on how much they fundraised, how much they've worked, we're taking future deposits.
You've never done this before, right?
Correct. So number seven, this is the second week of our trip. So the Camino de Santiago, so the Way of St. James. Basically, this is a pilgrimage, it's a walk, is one of the ways that you can complete this. Approximately, I say in here, about 100,000 people a year participate in this journey to the city that we're, that we're going to. Some people walk, bike, horseback, you can do it a lot of different ways. But if you're walking, in order to earn the certificate and have, you know, be considered that you officially completed the journey, you walk for at least 100 kilometers, which is about 70 miles. And that's what we plan on doing. The kids are pretty excited for it. Turn to page two. There's a breakdown of our day-to-day distances there. Towards the bottom of the page, where it says day 11 to 16. They're broken down into kilometers and miles, so you can see approximately how far we would walk in a day. The distances on two of the days are pretty extensive. But over the course of eight, 10, 10 hours, the walking pace is actually pretty manageable. Most people end up finishing fairly early if they're pretty motivated. Otherwise, it's also common to just take a long break in the middle of the day. It really depends on, you know, what people prefer, so I guess that'll depend for us. This, even though it sounds like a really long distance and it seems a little bit of a daunting task, one of the things that I really want to highlight here is that this is a, this is a journey, it's a, it's a trip that is accessible to everyone. You know, it's probably not a good idea to just get out of bed and go for it, right? You know, you do, do a little bit of training, do a little bit of preparation. But very young people to very old people could complete this every year and a, and a much, over a much greater distance than, than we're going to. So I'm confident, the kids are confident that this is all very doable, their parents are very supportive of all this. And this is definitely the part of the trip that I think the kids are most excited about, so. Couple of other things, last paragraph there. In the unlikely event that somebody is injured, obviously, we'll make changes to our itinerary as we need to. If we get two days into it and somebody has, you know, horrible blisters and, you know, can't walk, well, we'll make some adjustments. ESN is aware that that is a concern, you're a potential concern, and so they have secondary itinerary ready. So if we need to make changes, we can do that. And so, you know, we were sort of prepared for that scenario. The scenario that we can't prepare for too far in advance is the weather. In this area, rain is very common. It's a, it's a climate pretty similar to like Portland or Seattle, where it's very mild, but it, like I said, they do get quite a bit of rain. When I was there, my experience was that, yes, it does rain often, but it very rarely rains for a long duration of time. Typically, you know, it was like an hour, and then it clears up. Maybe it'll rain again, you know, I mean, it's, it's common for it to, for it to rain, but it's really not the kind of thing that keeps people indoors. However, if we get to, if we get to Spain and, and, you know, on day 10, we're sitting there looking at the forecast and it's just not good, you know, pouring rain every day is the forecast, and like I said, we have the secondary itinerary that we will, we will work with, so. Questions about that?
What is the, the student's purpose, or maybe your purpose, for the, for the pilgrimage?
So it's a pretty unique, it's a pretty unique way to get to know the region. You know, one of the things that, in talking with the kids and just my personal philosophy, you know, why we're not going with one of the typical tour companies is obviously to save money, but also because when you go with a company like that, you generally don't get a very authentic experience. When we do this, we're going to be passing through all these little towns, and so they'll get the opportunity to really see what it's like in a place like Black Earth. You know, I mean, people come to Wisconsin, they see Madison. Madison is not necessarily representative of Wisconsin, just like Santiago isn't necessarily of Spain. So in getting to, to walk through a little bit of the countryside and to, to go through these little towns, they'll get to interact with more local people. And they'll get to see a side of Spain that very few people get to see.
Is part of this trip over spring break? I don't know when spring break.
Yes.
Yes.
First week.
Okay. And what are the, is there any safety concerns? And I don't just mean with where you're staying, you know, I'm talking about generally in the region.
Right.
With all the turmoil that's going on over, on that side of the world.
My, my initial answer, and I, you know, I guess I'm putting myself out there when I say this. I feel like this is probably one of the safest places that you could take people, which is why I chose it. I know it very well, I know the coordinating organization. And going abroad is always a risk. You know, there are always things that, that you're, you're not going to foresee, or, you know, things can happen, right? But I feel very good about, about going to that place. People have said, well, why don't you go into somewhere like Barcelona? You know, the kids can actually, you know, there are other people from here that have been to Barcelona, you know, that they could talk to about it. But, yeah, Barcelona's kind of like going to Milwaukee or going to Detroit. You know, I really, I would never take these kids there. Not because it's a horrible place, but because the security risks and just, you know, those types of concerns are just far greater. Santiago is a city of about 100,000 people, so it's quite a bit smaller than Madison. It's sort of like New Bay, right around that size. So it's a lot more manageable, so. And it's very rural, the area, it's sort of similar to Wisconsin agriculture, it's a big part in that region. So, yeah, I feel good about it. Are there concerns? Yeah, but there aren't. I'm on an email list for the, for the US Embassy about those sorts of things. Typically, when, when those emails come through, they're generally about Madrid and then Barcelona, and I haven't gotten a single one about that, so I feel good.
Is there a, is there a religious component to this trip or to this pilgrimage?
Yeah, in its base, yes. So the pilgrimage ends in the city of Santiago, Santiago means St. James. And the cathedral that is in the city is set to have the remains of St. James, the apostle, in, in part of the cathedral. So that's why people make this pilgrimage, is to, to come all this way and they, they, obviously, they get to enjoy the cathedral, they, they see the tomb of St. James, and sort of the, I guess, the pull of it is that it's sort of a self-renewal journey. You know, you're sort of, you know, you're not at work, you're not doing those things, you're just sort of out, you know, doing this thing with this end goal, and then, you know, sort of like a, like a cleansing journey, that's sort of what it is. But it's not really, it's not religious only. That is to say that, I mean, I, I, I wouldn't want to put a percentage on it, but quite a few of the people that do this every year don't really have a religious reason for doing it necessarily.
And your purpose is just to basically give them a different view of Spain?
Right, yeah, I mean, the, they, not all the kids are Catholic and, you know, the cathedral is, but that's certainly not a, not a requirement.
Everybody you're taking with you speaks pretty good Spanish?
I'm pretty pleased with the group, I gotta say. They're, they're a promising bunch. The, they'll all be in at the Spanish three next year, and so, yeah, they're definitely right. Other questions about that part of them?
Are there any other schools we know that are sending participants to that specific area?
Not that I know of, but I know that schools in Wisconsin are connected with that region. I had spoken to the organization that places Spanish exchange students here. They are in contact with lots of schools in Wisconsin and Minnesota, and they do reciprocal. And so we were hoping to work out something in that regard, but it, they, yeah, the timing is sort of going to work for us, capital wise, so. Okay, then just a quick run, run through the itinerary, the whole thing, they're numbered eight. So day one, bus to Chicago, fly Chicago to Madrid overnight. Day two, fly from Madrid to Santiago, so we'll get there sometime in the early afternoon, probably. We'll connect with our tour guide, eat dinner, check in for the night. Day three, trip to the northern, or to, excuse me, the western coast of Spain, and, and then we'll return to Santiago to sleep. That'll be our plan most nights, is to sleep in Santiago. Day four, to northern coast, to a beach, which has, it's called the Beach of Cathedral, because it's got these very large rock formations similar to, I think it's in Arizona, where they've got, you know, there are like these arches, and so we'll go and, we'll enjoy that for the day. Day five and six, we have tour through Santiago. Those days are in there for a couple of reasons. First of all, there's a lot to see in Santiago, so we wanted to make sure and have that. But also with, as I said, the dates of the trip can fluctuate a little bit. So if we end up going for fewer days, just, you know, again, because of flight costs, then we can sort of move those two days around, or perhaps just leave them if we end up going for two days fewer. And we still get to then see all the other things that we wanted to see. Day seven and eight, trip to Portugal. Porto is in the northern part of Portugal, it's like, I think it's like a three-hour bus ride or so, so it's pretty manageable. We'll sleep one night there and then return back to Santiago the second day. Day nine, trip to islands off the western coast, and pretty exciting. I've, I've been there one time, and they're, they're pretty spectacular. They've been voted several times the best beaches in the world, so a pretty special experience. Day 10, we'll take a train or a bus just north to Ferron, which is where we will start, the Camino, the pilgrimage. And then that takes us through days 11 through 16. Day 17, restroom with Camino and sightseeing group. There again, if we end up cutting the trip short, that's a day that possibly could get, could get taken out, but we will see. And then day 18, fly home. The flight home is, it's like nine hours, but with the time change, it ends up being like four or something like that, so. Pretty easy.
Have you thought about maybe paring back a little on this? Three weeks is an awful long time.
Right, the, the 18-day mark is sort of, you know, that's our ideal trip, like I said. And the fact that part of it is over spring break, I think the kids actually end up missing eight school days. Because, you know, we're including weekends, so missing eight school days, we don't, you know, I didn't think that was too unreasonable. And the fact that by the time we go, we will have been fundraising and preparing for this for three years. You know, I wanted to make sure that it's worth it for the kids, that they can come back feeling like they learned something, that it was all there. So, yeah, I do get that it's a, it was a pretty re, a long amount of time. I mean, there aren't many field trips that go this long. But it's not going to interfere with any other calendar events, we took care of that at our staff meeting and things like that, so. You know, like I said, this is our maximum, but if we end up going for all those days, I think it should be worth it.
I do want to clarify, if, there's, there will impact, and I'm not trying to correct too much, but it does, we will have athletic events, why, why you're.
Yeah, sure, that's true.
Want to be clear that, yes, I know Austin and the staff work really hard, they've made modifications. I'm sure Rich on a, a non-conference game will make some adjustments too, but just want to make sure.
That's true.
Good, well, it's in April, so what's going on in April?
Just track soccer, softball.
Couple of girls, yeah, we have one girl that's in soccer, a couple that play baseball, or one that plays baseball. Couple track guys.
What's the, what's the climate in April?
Pretty reasonable, generally, the, the average tempers, temperatures are around 60 degrees, so it's pretty, you know, pretty manageable. It's not 80 degrees in, you know, it's not sort of the Spain you think about on the beach, but it's sort of, you know, these beaches are more like, like Michigan, you know? Pretty, but it's not 80 degree water here. And so should be, should be the right time of the year to go walking, it's not going to be too hot and, and should be good enough.
So I'm sorry we got a lot of questions, but.
No, that's okay.
So you said you've been fundraising for three years, so the people that are going are mostly going to be like juniors and, or they'll be seniors and seniors this year?
Some of them will be, so we've had four kids that have been here from the start, and then we have four others that have come in just this last school year. So most of the kids, or half of the kids have been here for the last two years, or have been fundraising for the last two years and have one more to go. And the other four kids have, have, put in one year and will have another this year.
So I'm saying, like, so you've been fundraising, so say the juniors this year get to go, this is their only shot to go. Now you're going to do another trip next year or whatnot. So kids that are freshmen this year probably are not. Are you going to start fundraising for them, or?
Actually, one of the requirements that, that Austin and I talked about is that we want kids to be at least a sophomore to go on the trip. Not just in terms of their Spanish, you know, being in a slightly upper level class, but also just maturity-wise. And so freshmen won't be going, but by the time. And so freshmen won't be going, but by the time that rolls around, everyone will be at least a sophomore.
The band trips, the big band trips are every other year. And so that was another thing. I appreciate Mike doing it this year. Initially, they said, "What about this spring?" But this was the band trip, so they are trying to go opposite.
So if this goes smoothly, are you thinking every three years, every other year?
Yeah, every other year. I think the idea is that anyone who's in upper-level Spanish will have an opportunity one time in their high school career right now.
I chaperoned two trips, German trips, to Germany, Austria, Czech Republic. And this is completely different than a trip. I wanna say that the authenticity of those trips was very real, talking or living in families.
Sure, sure.
Having that trade-off with families, where they would stay here with us and we would stay with them. One of the major achievements of that kind of program was developing relationships. And some that are still strong today, you know, just in those week or so. I see that as one of the great benefits that these students will not have.
Right.
And you said that you had attempted to try to arrange for some of that.
Correct.
But it just was not.
Correct. So that's what I want. I want homestays and one of them this year are for this trip. But like I said, it wasn't gonna work out in terms of the timing, because one of the challenges is starting it, starting the homestay, like you said, that back and forth. And while I think we could have done it this year in time for the trip and everything, it would have been one of, a very last-minute thing. And the type of thing that I, you know, I don't think would have been beneficial for us to wait. Finding host families is always a challenge. When, I said that I've been talking to an organization here that hosts or sends Spanish students here. Their students are arriving, I think, next week, and I got an email last week, and they're still looking for families for their kids, you know. And that, I just, I wasn't gonna wait that long, you know. I really wanted to get this approved. And my hope is that now, with time before a potential next trip, you know, we'll be able to get some more solidity to that further in advance. That was my biggest concern, is, you know, right now we're less than a year out, and I couldn't see myself waiting, not, you know, potentially not having a host family for three or four kids two months before we're going. You know, that's just, so. But I completely agree with you. A homestay is definitely the thing that I want this to turn into.
And I think those were developed not through an organization, but through school contacts.
Okay.
So that the teacher contacted the other teacher.
Right.
And the students were, that's how it was made. So we took that, got middle person out of that whole thing.
Anybody else question? My biggest reluctance, to be honest with you, is the walking, not the distance. I'm not so concerned about that. It's walking through all these towns and small towns and mountains and whatever, and the length of this trip. Those are my two biggest concerns and why I'm reluctant to give my vote of yes to this.
So what concern do you have about the going through the town, just security or...
Safety and security.
Well, I mean, have you done this before yourself? Have you been on this walk before?
Part, not this distance, but I know quite a few people that have. Our tour guides all have several times, so they're experienced in this. They do this, he said, usually about once a month. And so, you know, their experience, I think, is what's gonna be the biggest aid in that respect. You know, we aren't a very big group, including all chaperones, we'll probably be around fifteen people. That's a very common-sized group of pilgrims to be walking through. And it's not just that, but there is also a culture around this. There are a lot of places along this route that let people doing the pilgrimage just stay for free, because this is something that the local community is very supportive of. We're not staying in the free ones, because we want our own rooms and those things. But this is definitely something that is supported by the local culture. It's definitely not, you know, a tourist trap. It's definitely not that sort of situation. So like I said, you know, things can always happen, but I definitely am a bit of a worrier. And so I wouldn't be doing it if I didn't have as much happen as I possibly could in that part of the trip.
So there's no offenders that rush you and try to get you to buy stuff? Is that pretty calm?
Yeah, it's really not, I don't know, I'm trying to think of a parallel here, but it's not really like that, where there are...
Not going to Cancun.
Right, right. It's, again, I mean, the paths are close to the roads. You know, it's sort of like we have this bike path out here next to the creek, you know. I mean, it's within, you know, reasonable distance of establishments and all that. It's not that we're gonna be out in the middle of nowhere, you know, fifteen miles from the next light. And so we should be in good shape.
How many people would you think that, you said there's groups of people that walk this town? Is there always somebody around, is it like masses of people walking? So you will let people in front of you, you'll let people behind you, or is it very sporadic?
It depends on the time of year. Holy Week is one of the biggest, is one of the biggest weeks in spring, or the biggest in the spring, which is the week before we'll be going. And that was planned, you know, I didn't wanna go during the Russian. So during that time, yeah, it's probably the kind of thing, it's probably like, you know, Highway 12. I mean, you're pretty much always gonna see cars there. You know, the frequency depends on the day. But in the spring, it's less sporadic, but yeah, you're gonna see people frequently throughout the day.
Have you talked with the students on safety plans? Or will you be trying to stay together? And, you know, you're gonna have those students that are gonna want to walk faster, but slower.
We had a meeting with the parents and the kids about four months ago, just going over what my requirements for them are gonna be. And we covered those sorts of things, staying with the group, knowing, you know, just knowing where you are, writing things down, like our telephone numbers, what the name of our hotel is, what, you know, the address, you know, all those sorts of things. So yes, we have gone over them, we will go over them probably a couple more times, yeah.
I'm just thinking, three weeks, 'cause they're gonna have to pack a lot of stuff to get through three weeks. I mean, I'd be surprised if they could throw it on a suitcase. I mean, they're gonna have a lot of stuff.
Right, the kids have sort of said that they're open in terms of restrictions or openness in luggage. You know, they pretty much have the option to do what they want at this point. Some of the kids have said that they're very motivated, that they're light packers, and that they're just gonna stick to carry-on, and they're not gonna have a checked bag. Which I say, great, that's probably what I'm gonna end up doing, because I don't wanna have to deal with it. But if they bring a checked bag, ESN has storage for us that we can leave our stuff on these small trips where we don't need all that, and during the walk when we don't wanna carry it, so.
Oh, so when you're walking, you won't be dragging your luggage?
No, no, no. Yeah, that's a good question, I shouldn't mention that.
So do they, like, meet you at your next stop?
ESN?
Yeah.
They'll be walking with us.
But with all the stuff?
So they'll, we'll leave all that where their offices are in Santiago. So we'll leave it there, we'll go and then, so for those six days, we'll be without our, you know...
So you'd have to backpack, basically?
All right, any other questions? Hearing none, do we have a motion to approve the trip to Spain?
Almud. Still moved.
Jim, do you have a second?
Second.
Isaiah?
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Are you sure to turn off your cell phones? Nobody needs international fees.
Should I comment on that?
Go ahead.
I, that's exactly what I said. I said, "Don't even bother bringing your American phone, 'cause, you know, you'll have to make changes to it if you want it to work," or, you know, whatever. Several of the parents said that it might be nice for them, which I was surprised. They said it might be nice. We haven't, I haven't, you know, made an official call on that yet, but they said that even if they're not calling people, it might be nice if they already Wi-Fi around to send email or something like that, just like, "Hey, I'm okay." My thought is probably good, you know, quick phone call when we get there, maybe once a day, but we'll see what happens, yeah. I, that's what I, that's what I don't want. I don't want it to be like, you know, a field trip here where they're all on the bus, just, so, we'll see.
One thing I also admire is your attempt to do this, this particular trip, because it would have been easy to contract company, make all the arrangements for you. And your desire for them to have that authentic, small-town experience that sometimes they do not get in these other trips.
Any other discussion? Hearing none. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim? Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll give you a very reluctant yes.
Aren't you gonna be a chef?
No. No, my Spanish is like C, I know that, that's it.
Wow.
Yeah, I don't even know that. All right, moving on. Discussion regarding first student contract. Can I see we have some first student...
Carry your own, so then people won't carry you. It's our local manager, and also Mike Goff, who coordinates our first student operations in several states in the Midwest. Welcome.
Thank you.
So this is brought to the board, and I would just remind you that we cannot get into contract negotiation. We can talk about issues, we can talk about things we might like to see or whatever, but as far as the contract goes, you can ask questions about the contract, but it won't be incorporated in the big situation.
And then your board back, it is a contract that was negotiated in 2009, and we extended it in 2014. 2014, as it's just addendums, things of course have changed over time. Changed a lot in the bussie world, where we now have cameras. We've adjusted the fuel calculations. In the first contract that I negotiated for student, we also had some set increases. First just notified us that it would be from 2015, 16, a 1% increase, which is the floor. Yeah, which is the floor, yes. That's on page thirty-seven. The chart on thirty-seven, we purposely put in the ceiling, and then, you know, that was... And then, you know, we're just informed this time every year. It's CPI-based, it's an equation based on consumer price index. Urban, I believe, specific to transportation. So in a nutshell, that is, you know, that's the information you have in front of you. The history goes back a long way. Previously, it was a local vendor, then Verona Bus, and then first, Verona first is an international transportation company.
Do you go to Spain?
Good.
Not in Africa. But that does have a pretty big opportunity, but, you know, we're not in Spain. Predominantly, our international is Canada, and also Great Britain's often were a word for franchises and public busing, not school busing in Canada.
I'll also add, the other thing that was important, the district we increased was the amount of professional development. Went up from five hours to ten hours in this contract, so. And we've had some conversations about doing some things together, more things together, you know, it was worth it to do.
And part of that increasing it to five to ten, ten, ten is our standard for a company. In some cases, we did actually, well, we had a subject matter, and some school districts have been having all the PBIS, so we've been doing some special PBIS training, coordination with whatever the district program is. Yeah, we increased it, but we increased it to what we're currently doing in South Spain.
All right, well, I will open this up to the board to discuss any, anything they want to discuss about it.
I was gonna ask, I know last year, at times, first student had struggled with being able to get drivers. And I just wondered, it's kind of become public now, is it Verona is no longer having first student as their bus provider? Is that, I don't think you can comment on that. Is that going to help us in getting drivers up this way more?
I don't think specifically that will, will not. You know, business is a contracted business, companies gain and lose business annually. Having said that, school bus drivers as an industry, right now, the industry is about 20% short. And I'm talking countrywide, whether that's, whether that's a private contractor, whether that's a school district that does their, their own house. What have we done? And I don't know, that's a pretty good question, but what have we done, what are we currently doing? You mentioned we had a CPI increase of 1% on the contract. Last year, we raised our wages in a little excess of over 2%. This year, it's about four and a quarter on average. Some of the categories, some drivers will be getting 6% plus. We raised our starting wage over 6% dollar an hour. We've partnered with a, say, a national third-party firm called PPS. If you're not familiar with them, they host job sites through automation, and also helps support our local management in terms of advertising dollars, improvement dollars, community events, we don't talk about it on the local paper, those type of things. We've also put in, I wanna say substantial bonuses for training that you may or may not know. But a lot of the folks that come to us either have a CDL license or they don't have a CDL license. For those who don't, you know, that minimum training, as far as our company is concerned, is about forty-five hours, maybe a little bit longer than that person does. Somebody that does have a license is seventeen hours, which is above the state regulation. It's above our competitors providing terms of training. And last, I think, you know, with that four and a quarter percent overall increase in wages, we're definitely the market leader, new investment. I can also tell you we're the market leader in terms of pay. Specifically, for what is Verona mean? Again, companies within our state gain, lose business annually. We would hope that some of those folks will want to come over and work in this market, but depending upon their personal situation, it's kind of like, somebody living here, go to the road. That may be appealing to them, hours, family, expenses getting to and from work. So it's more an individual choice. And, yeah, solicited people, we'll wait and see if we have people wanting to transfer over to this one.
So how does the process work if Carrie ends up being short? What does she do? Does she typically contact?
Well, there's a couple, when you say short. You know, there are certain times of year, you get, I think, in a contract where contracted have a 10% spare ratio. We're running fourteen hours here, that's, you know, one and a half buses or less, probably two buses. Well, there are definitely times in both the fall, but particularly in the spring, where they're maybe able to call interfering trips. Those trips that, whether they're athletic or non-athletic, that either are being scheduled to leave before overtime or are scheduled to run back after overtime. You know, in terms of our overheads and costs, hard for me to go out and hire ten additional drivers to say, for ten times a year or whatever, I mean, EJ left the other time, not. So in most cases... So, in most cases, uh, we coordinate on a daily basis, uh, our resources within the state, whether it's here or other locations. And again, as, as some locations have those heavy days of interfering trips and some days they contract down and they're able to, to move resources. So, uh, Carrie doesn't contact me every day. You have a coordinator in the state that, that actually moves resources around, equipment, go drivers, we're, indeed. Yeah, we're short, um, I think last year we ran 13 drivers on 14 hours. We had somebody here, uh, throughout the whole year, uh, at a premium to us, not, not to you as the district. And one other contract thing is when we do move resources around to cover extra trips above the, you know, we're not charging premium, uh, to do that. And that's, and that cost me more, uh, pure there, but it's part of the service that we want to provide you.
I know there was times last year when we had bus drivers that were from, going in from Milwaukee with, and they were coming up to Verona and staying in hotels and then coming up to drive a house for us. And, you know, I know, we appreciate that. It's just, I, I wasn't sure if there's a remedy for that or if that's just how it works and that's all they have to do.
Um, I'll be, oh, when you say this is how it works. You contract with us to provide service and, and, uh, given the, the situation, again, industry-wise with bus driver, in particular this particular market, it's a challenging market. Like I said earlier, I mean, we've increased, uh, wages over 6%, almost 7% over the last two years. Spent a lot of money on bonuses and, you know, other things that are, are, again, haven't been passed through you as, as a customer. So answering your question, um, we would definitely like to be able to see debates of local drivers, sustainable local drivers, because it's costing me more, um, uh, the service at this particular business by having a driver in the seat by, by the driver. So, I mean, it doesn't happen again. Does it make sense some days? Yeah, especially when you have those five interfering trip type days. The other part of that is, um, you know, in, in terms of, I keep hearing Milwaukee. And I know in this part of the, the state, you know, it's sort of over here, I'm taking kids to Milwaukee. A couple of things with those drivers. Those drivers aren't necessarily coming from Milwaukee. They're coming from places like Brookfield, which is a well-established community. They're coming from places like, uh, Milwaukee Shore. Coming from places like West Alice. But those drivers that come up here are, 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 what we call our, our, um, our swing drivers. I mean, uh, those are the drivers that have usually the most exposure, that help us the longest. They're usually the adults who are in those positions because they're, they're best that we have. And also the premium drivers as well in terms of the wage and pay. So they're not, uh, you know, deftly, but they're not J. Schmuck from, from, you know, the corner that, or just a popular finding, so I mean, lack of other terminology.
Yeah, I talked to them. I thought they were, they did a good job. And I appreciate Carrie because when I see her driving, I know that she just has to do her part too. And towards the end of the school year, it was sometimes almost every day.
Well, one, one thing I want to reiterate is, is that's just not the way things go. Having said that, that you communicate with other school districts outside of us, you'll, you'll, you'll understand there is a shortage in this market. Madison, and I'm, I'm going to lump this area into Madison area. But if you look at this area as a whole, again, I think, quite a 4% or below 4%. It's a tough market right now. And again, uh, one of the challenges we have when we negotiate extensions or contracts or what have you is understanding what our costs are. I think Mark made a comment earlier, you know, the market has changed in the last few years. And, um, I guess in big picture, that's the good things. But, uh, um, you know, it, it, it's our job to operationally to react to that. It's our job to make sure we have qualified, and besides qualified, uh, drivers in, in the seats driving those buses in the meantime. You heard, things that we're doing, uh, to figure that out and get drivers in here, uh, qualified drivers in training.
So how many, how many local drivers do we have? Because I've come out here at the end of the school day, I don't recognize anybody that's driving a bus. And I know just five years ago, I could walk down the line and say hi to everybody because I knew them.
Thirteen.
Local drivers locally, I, we have fifteen.
And, yeah, some of those drivers may be what we call casual, um, and they're able to drive trips, but they're not, they have a job during the day, so they're not available for home to school. They may be able to drive weekend trips at weekends, so I think two or three of those.
A lot of the drivers that get brought in ride the roads because of the little ones are taking the trips. They can give their own trips.
So how many, how many roads, how many local drivers do we have?
All the roads have local drivers except for one last year.
Okay.
There was one that had the, um, walk driver.
Yeah, we brought in. Yeah, we brought that one driver in for the year. The others, again, were basically times when, I don't know how, how have you got them in the future trips, but I know there was a day that was, you know, basically 20 routes to cover. You know, 14 home to school and another six that needed to either depart or, or, or run back after the, the home to school time. And again, I don't know how many days that was, but I had, like, off time I had, I would say that's probably 10% in the school year.
For those days that we are bringing in someone from outside of the area that's not local, what's done to orient them to their routes, um, to kind of help them know where all those little kids especially really go?
I have all the roads, first of all, for turn-by-turn directions and they're handed that when they get there. And I go through every route with them. And if there's any questions, I answer them. I, a lot of times I'll take the map of the district and I'll show them, like, where the roads are so they can kind of familiarize, you know, this road before, the road where they would have to turn. And we, I go over all the roads, there's thorough, I came with them as soon as they get here. I try to get him, them here. Maybe should try to get them here a little bit after school, you know, so they have more than enough time to look and understand and exactly what it looks like. The kids are listed, they get a route listed where the kids would be listed. And, um, then they can look over that route list. And if they want to, they can check out the kids if the kids get on the bus. It's, you know, their choice if they wanted to check them off. Or, you know, that way they would know also about how many kids get off at each stop.
I also want to add, Dale also does some precautions. Are, do you want to explain what he do with our, our smaller students in their backpacks, Dave?
Yeah, all the elementary kids have their, their bus stops, they zip line there on the outside of the backpack. And ideally, one on their whole school year. So, some of the little kids get off, but most are little ones. And, um, you know, throughout the year, we try to update, particularly our four-year-olds, our five-year-olds. You know, we want the teachers to watch to make sure that they stay on there. Maybe you just never know when you have a sub, you know. We have our local drivers, they know the kids and, you know, who's going to, but when there's a sub on there, you need to be able to at least look at that tag on the backpack. And Carrie's helped a ton with that, I mean.
The four-year-olds and the kindergartners, we have signed seats up towards the time. The four-year-olds should stay in, like, their first two, three seats, maybe kindergarteners. We tried it from upfront. That way they know, you know, the driver knows, especially like when the four-year-olds get on. You know, I have so many four-year-olds and that's coming like I have on the bus. And then on the route list, I also have the four-year-olds highlighted on the turn-by-turn direction. I'll have all the four-year-olds and they're highlighted down there so they know where the four-year-olds are.
So as school board members, if we get a complaint from a resident about something, what is the process supposed to look like? Are we, do you want us to come direct, tell the parent to directly contact you or should they kind of go to Mark and then Mark contacts you? Or how, what's that, what is that supposed to look like or do you guys?
It's really district by district. We had a meeting, uh, a couple of months ago, uh, we said that Dale failed, I think, wasn't on that meeting as well. And one of the things that I said I wanted to see done is, I'd get you guys to establish what that protocol should be. And I say district by district, and some districts were, you know, 100 buses and, and, and it's different, right? But we've got the flexibility to probably want to communicate it. You know, I, I, I like to say as a partnership, um, so that's coming to Carrie. You know, Carrie should have that established contact then with, with member in the district, the principal or, or, or the administrators that are handling that. But that, I think, needs to be the, um, iron belt. So I call it communication plan, call it a communication plan. Or if the call comes to the district, you know, we should be notified and we should be working together in partnership. And more often at districts, let's say, uh, you know, the principal is in system principal or whatever, any kind of size of the district, that multiple potential issues, whether it be an accident, which, you know, there's a procedure in place. And I believe there's a, a, an emergency, um, true trunk home list, uh, in place. But behavioral issues that may crop up, uh, you know, as Mark mentioned, the last contract negotiation, I think on the board, uh, was very presidient with cameras, the cameras are in. So, uh, I mean, we get to those behavioral type of things, being able to communicate, find out. We have those, uh, procedures established, uh, whose due and what, so we can know what happened, who said what, and those type of things. I strongly recommend. So, answering your question, what does it look like? It looks different than, um, I operate in very different districts. It's different in every one. But I think, um, I'm going to tell you, we've got flexibility, um, to do whatever. And, and look with, with Mark and his team to make those recommendations. And we'll start to do that, have that conversation.
And we, for the past few years, one of the things we experienced in the first couple of years that I was here working with Dale and Asta is, you know, primarily if it's a student issue, then it goes to the principals. They deal with, you know, the, our principals work with Carrie on student. In general, if it's routes, you know, it may start with them, you know, Asta and they'll let me know. But, you know, on the other hand, if it's a question about, you know, we had the example of drivers, yeah. I'll talk to Carrie, I'll talk to Mike and we'll, we'll figure that out, you know, like Mike shared. Do you, you know, we got a conversation about that earlier this year. So with a student issue, you want to tell you to put something out? The opposite. Students or the principals. Okay. Just, just like, I don't know if a kid's running the hallway. I don't, quite honestly, I don't, you know, Asta or Dale will tell me if a student can suspend it if I need to know that the principals are student. Okay. Otherwise, is routes or drivers or something, confirm to you?
Well, I would go to Mark. I would.
I, I, that's why I want to figure it out.
My recommendation is when in doubt, go to Mark.
And I'll, I'll direct it to.
Go to the principals because they'll go to Mark if it seems necessary. That way, there's one point of contact and our district administrator is aware of any potential issues where he can, when he's negotiating, he can say, "Hey, you know what? On this date, it was this. On this date, it was this again. On this date, it was this again. We have an issue."
Well, and, and, and I, I even, before you even talk and negotiate, and those are things that we should be dealing with regularly on.
Right.
And I do come out, uh, two, three times a year, Mark and I, and sit down and, and, and if it's an important enough issue, and we've had a few here, uh, service issues, you know, we, we sat down and discussed it. So I, I guess my point is I don't want to wait a year, three years, or two years.
Right.
I want to be able to fix the problem, address it. But, um, again, um, we can sit down and, and I can give, uh, Mark and his team, you know, here's how it's done in other places and, you know, what, what do you want? I, I definitely want to be involved in all of, when I say I, first student wants to be involved in all of those, uh, uh, issues so that we have an understanding and can provide a solution from our end as well. So, and that's Carrie's job as the local manager.
And then we do the principals first?
Or either one, just as long as it, as long as it gets to Mark if it's deemed necessary, but who are your principals or?
I just want to make sure we're all on the same page as all of us.
Yeah. Yeah. As long as it all filters through one person at the end, that's all I'm concerned about. But I, I would just caution everybody that if you're talking to a parent and there's a busing issue, I don't want to hear, "Oh, there's a busing issue. Well, who's it with?" They don't want to say. Uh-uh. Doesn't work. Because if anybody's got a question, they need to be able to contact that person. So I would strongly say that if you're going to take a complaint and they say that they don't want to be known, then say, "You know what? Then I'm not going to take the complaint. I need to know that you'll back me on the complaint you're making" or whatever. My only caution. But at the end of the day, you're all board members. Make your own decisions yourself.
Yeah, and I, I, I'm not going to disagree with that, but having said that, I mean, if, if there are what we call rumblings or what have you, I mean, I, I definitely want to be aware that there, there is a potential issue out there. At least, uh, I guess my point is Carrie should be aware. And even if we hear those rumors, if Carrie hears that, I mean, we should be having those conversations so that we're, we're not surprised or, you know. I told you guys about that five times. I don't think they did anything about it here because they don't identify themselves. It's kind of hard. But, you know, we, we do a survey once a year. We survey, uh, you know, uh, the district. We include you from a board perspective on that survey as well. You know, it's a national third-party, uh, survey. We ask a lot of detailed questions, communication. We ask about how our local management's doing. We ask about my position. We ask about safety. We ask a pretty detailed, uh, variety of questions. And, you know, we gather that data to not only be able to ensure we've got, um, you know, quality product or service in the local community, but it also gives us feedback on, uh, on, you know, what is the top-of-line local communities and, and futuristic where we can make adjustments, technology or what have you.
And on the flip side, yes, about complaints also, what we've worked on this year was what, what, what is it doing? And then that Carrie, you know, the bus drivers are going to communicate to Carrie. Carrie will communicate to us.
And one of the things we've talked about here is, and I've done this in other districts as well, is, um, you know, I'm a believer in providing information. So one of, some of the things we've done in other districts is I, I've worked with the location manager of the district to put together a scorecard or a weekly report that, you know, says things like on time and if the bus wasn't on time, what was the issue? And hopefully, hopefully it's already known, but at least it's being tracked, right? Complaints, uh, like those type of accidents or anything like that. So, I mean, again, there's some examples I can share with, with Mark or with the board, you know, and, uh, I don't say I want to complicate it too much, but we usually can put together a pretty quick, uh, weekly snapshot, you know, turn it over to Mark one day. You know, I'm a believer in over-communicating, but if someone did get a mess during the course of the week, it's there, right? You know, we can also track and, and improvement and those type of things.
Who is, who is ultimately responsible if a bus is running about, let's just say a bus is running 15 minutes late? And, you know, a lot of these people have, um, if they have daycare, they've got somebody waiting at a bus stop or whatever, whatever the case may be. And they're running 15 minutes late or whatever. Who is ultimately responsible to call the parents or contact person, I shouldn't say, just say parents, the contact person to say, "Hey, the bus is going to be 15 minutes late" or whatever?
Um, there's not a district that operates in that we call parents 15 minutes late. If there's something wrong with the bus, um, if it was an accident, that's usually when the call starts.
Okay.
I, I don't know, um, a couple of things, sorry. I don't, I can tell you probably don't have the capability to call 20 or 30 people who are 10 or 15 minutes late. Having said that, um, a couple of things we're working on, and we already talked to Mark, is, is, is our buses all have GPS on them. We're refining that data. Technology is great, but, um, you know, the data, the data house is always good as it is. And, and, yeah, I, I, I'm saying this is, is, it's pretty complex stuff. We're starting to build reports and we're starting to, to develop tools for not only our local managers, but ultimately for parents as well. So a couple of things we have, this will tease you with the future. You know, five years, six years, I think it's going to be pretty much common in the industry that parents will have something on their phone that says where that bus is. Where are we at right now? A couple of things. Talking about, we have the ability to give the district something called Customer Focus. And Focus is, is our proprietary software that runs our GPS platform, which gives some in the district, you know, the ability to webbase, go on, look at buses, look if they were late, do sometimes those reports and those type of things. I think the most important, the other thing that we had a conversation on is, uh, we use an automated, a platform called, uh, well, I'd say Trapeze, but that's a, Trains Finder here in this place, yeah. And, um, Trains Finder, uh, this summer just upgraded their, their operating software. And Transfinder, this summer, just upgraded their, their operating software to a different platform. So we're in the process right now of upgrading our computer and software to accommodate that. Once that happens, we're going to work with the district and the IP to be able to push that routing information to your Skyward, and hopefully, one day, get information back. I don't want to break the subject, but, you know, right now, we're going through school registration and such forth, it's all paper, Kerry does it, do this. Or some of the years, already putting that in the Skyward, right? So, I mean, we do have the ability, once we get both platforms talking, where you push me the information, I mean, put it into a route, push you the information right back. And that's what we're working on right now, we'll get there. And once we get there, I believe your Skyward has it, I don't know what they call it, it's an alert system or something.
They call it Sky Alert, or we have School Messenger.
Yeah, School Messenger, where, let's say it's winter out and something does happen with the bus, still is whenever it's 15 minutes late, you know, we'll be able to, and it happens in various forms now, whether you give Kerry the ability to go into your system and say, whatever it is, blue route, purple route, or whatever the route's specification is, and that message will go out to all the parents. And the pros and the cons are, is this, again, like to over-communicate, but let's say it's a bus that's coming home and it's dropped half the kids off, and something happens, everybody's going to get that message, that's on that bus. But again, I'd rather over-communicate and somebody say, well, my son's already home, my daughter's already home. But that's what we're working on, hopefully.
Yeah, and our, and our end now, we've since hired a second IT person, so Dan Perkins at this time, that's the plan, we're finalizing it, that's the next couple of weeks, but we'll have one IT person in charge of pushing some of that stuff out. So we may practice, we currently use it for food service, low bounds, but we could, we're looking to practice it for registration, so we'll press, we'll send out and try to, you know, get feedback to see if people are getting it. It should work, but again, on our end, we need two more hands and one more brain to make it.
I will say, as a principal, that that's probably my number one phone call that I get. After all the office people are gone, I pick up the phone and it's a parent saying, my kid is at home, where are they? I have no clue. I said, call the bus company, we tried, it just goes into voicemail. I'm not going to just say, well, sorry, there's nothing I can do, so, you know, it doesn't happen a ton. Usually I'll call Kerry or herself. If they leave late from our building, that's a whole different story. I can send an email blast, because I already know they're leaving 15 minutes late, I'll send it out. But it happens, it's not uncommon that I get a phone call and I have no clue what's going on. And so that would be helpful in some fashion, so that the parent, you know, they're worried.
And, and, and it's becoming more and more common, you see more and more automation in the industry, right? Things, and we have a, we have a routing, it's an internal company called First Banking Solutions, they're all in Missouri, and they work with the Trapezes, the Transfinders, the Versitrans, and that's who we have set to partner with as a district, to work with the IT to get this up and running. Futuristic though, there's a lot of other cool things. I think you'll be able to partly do the things like online registration, we've got the ability to publish routes and to, I don't know what they call it, usually on the parent portal of some type on your website, I'm not sure if you are not, but, you know, parents can go to their portal and see their kids, pick up routing information, not anybody else's. But, so there's a lot of cool stuff out there that, you know, started a conversation about in the summer, and, you know, should be able to get up and running.
What other school districts in this area are, do you guys still have a contract with?
Do we still have a contract with? That's a question you may ask in that question. We, we contract, well, there are five districts here in the state of Wisconsin. We have roughly 950 buses operating in Wisconsin. We're, we're right above the largest contractor in the suite in this area. You know, we do, John Bill, we do, we do, we do, we do, we do, we do, we also do business up in McCross, so we have a couple of contracts, so there's districts up in the boss side area, Green Bay, I'm going to say Milwaukee, but I'm going to encompass the Milwaukee area, like Three Hills, the Green Hills, and Wake Mill section, about like six buses can all shut, so a pretty big presence.
Do you have a big footprint in the area?
Yeah.
Thanks.
You know, I think the biggest thing I heard, and again, we started that conversation at Lake Des Moines, is we definitely need to make sure, again, what we do is a partnership. And assuming you have a contract, you can do something, but at the end of the day, it's a partnership, and we do a lot of things community-wise. We donate PACR tickets for various fundraisers at the district, we're also looking to do more. But, you know, when I say partnership, you know, we really need to establish what is that, the communication will look like. I don't want to junker dodge any type of complaints, you know, I heard what the gentleman here said about, I don't know if they're able to give their name, but, you know, we want to know that information, because without it, if there is a problem, we can't fix it. We want to be able to provide information in that, and we can, you know, solutions we talked about earlier that are made in the spring, was, was that the scorecard that turned it on? That, this is what you should be sharing with us as well.
Okay. Anybody else?
Well, it's an issue of, kind of a compound issue with what you both said, mainly a lot of new faces, but a couple of issues makes a compound issue much worse.
Mm-hmm.
So, thank you for your service, and thank you very much, Kerry, a couple, a couple times, a little, a little bit, but it can definitely exacerbate.
They're wearing trouble, are they?
Not yet.
All right, nothing else?
Okay, last thing, I just wanted to say, we do appreciate your business, and we are a very proud part of the community here. Last thing, I'll, I'll share with you, and, you know, if you work with Mark, we have also been, at least, a disparted local community, and, you know, what I can do is with the PACR tickets, getting on Mark's, I mean, as I've always raised them for a while, but I can't remember what it was, but, you know, I have a working on some summer stuff for you, so, you know, most of the type of things, or potentially developing, or, or do some community-type service, I can want to, again, I, I know that we're a national company, we got somebody else's name on the side of us, so, you know, it's what means we're a partnership and a part of local community.
Well, keep in mind, there's a Gridiron golf outing coming up next Sunday, so I'm just, I'm just, you know, just mentioning that, and there's a couple of board members from the Gridiron here?
There's, there's, but, yeah, those are the type of things we've got, there's a lot of educational foundations that do, do the golf outing, and, you know, there's a lot of athletic things, sponsorships for many science and fields, but where we can't help, I think that it's next week, and Kerry's on vacation, so. Give Mark some information, give him the, or we support whole sponsorships, you know, not, not $50,000 for a synthetic turf, but he has a little expense. Yeah, those type of things, and I do enjoy playing golf, if you can bear with me, hopefully it's best ball.
It is.
Those are the type of things I play.
Very, very cute.
All right, thank you guys for coming, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, personnel, do you have a motion to accept the resignation of Erin Wheeler as business official with thanks of service since 2011? Do you want a date on that as to her last day?
It's in my letter, September 7th.
Huh?
It's in my letter.
Okay. Yeah. Effective September 7th?
Yeah, it's in my letter.
I know, but...
Oh, yeah, yes.
How long has it been motion?
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
So I'm going to add September 7th. Got a second?
Awesome.
Thank you. Discussion. Who was here?
I've already told her how upset I am, so I don't need to say it out here.
Well, best of luck, I understand the whole situation, so best of luck to you and I hope things work out well. Jim?
Yes.
James? Andy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'm voting no. You could have tried me.
I could have, but ceremonial no goes deep.
All right, thank you. Do you have a motion to accept the resignation of Cammie Streets as middle high school math teacher with thanks of service for, with thanks of service since 2014?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Eric Dunn? Jim?
Yes.
James?
Sandy?
Cindy?
Kim?
Isaiah?
Yes.
Oh, yes as well. Do you have a motion to accept the resignation of Daniel King as assistant music director with thanks of service since 2014?
Second?
Second.
Cindy?
Discussion. Eric Dunn?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Discuss possible action to hire a .50 FTE 4K teacher. You have a piece of paper on the table, General Lee Johnson is the recommendation. Second?
Second.
Thank you, Kim. Discussion. Dale, do you want to give us any quick, other than in the letter?
People less have, she comes to us with a lot of 4K experience, very sharp, very pleasant, think she's going to be a great fit, yeah, just really excited to have her on our team, yeah.
Cool.
Especially for a part-time position.
Not easy to find, is it?
No, and, yeah, very excited, and she's excited to come here.
Don't you want to drive a part-time bus?
Oh, they already left.
They're on my...
4K bus?
Asta used to do that for the old times. She's still has it too.
Any, any other really good conversation about this? Eric Dunn?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Cindy?
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do you have a motion to hire Cassandra Gurkey as middle school volleyball coach for the 15-16 season with a yearly stipend of 1,500?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Eric Dunn?
Yes.
James?
Sandy?
Cindy?
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Do you have a motion to hire Melissa Schmidt as middle school teacher with a starting annual salary of 35,000? Second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
I was going to say that Cammie Street...
Not yet. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do you have a motion to hire Tony Pharoah as middle school boys' basketball coach for the 15-16 season with a stipend of 1,500?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
We got a lot of passion. He loves basketball.
Does he?
He does, he'll...
He doesn't call.
Okay. Cool. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do you have a motion to hire Sarah...
Pleasure.
Thank you, as head high school cross-country coach for the 15-16 season with a stipend of 2,550. So, thank you. Second?
Second.
Cindy? Thank you. Discussion.
Yay. We know that.
Cool.
That's what's happening.
Oh, okay. Awesome. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Do you have a motion to hire Aaron Hagan as high school assistant varsity football coach for the 15-16 season with a stipend of 2,400?
Second.
Do you have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. So is this the second? This is our third coach?
So it's a one head coach and two assistants right now.
Okay. And have we officially hired Nate as...
Nate was hired a couple of months ago.
Okay, couldn't remember.
Yeah, in the group, hired a couple of months ago.
Okay, okay.
It seemed like two months ago.
I just, I just wanted to make sure. Yep.
Was, I forget the head football coach.
Ralph?
Ralph, coach, Ralph K.
Yeah, yeah. Was he involved in the interviews?
Yeah, absolutely. Enriching us, I guess, was real on that one, or not?
Down on here.
Yeah.
Put your hand up. Mrs. Hagan, sorry. You don't know Mrs. Hagan?
I do, yeah, 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 I know her, but I don't know her. Sorry, I don't know her. I'm sure I will. Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well.
Could I make one clarification for number two, and I don't know if you need to vote on it or not. In Cammie's resignation letter, she resigned from math and the student council advisor. So I don't know if that covers it or decapitates or something.
We will, we'll add it to the next agenda.
Yeah.
No, can't do it now. We'll add it to the next agenda so that she's resigned from that position.
That, that position's really out, so.
It just, it was all wrapped up in one honor or another.
Okay, thank you. All right, discuss possible action on claim involving a student. As most of you remember, this is the one that is tied to lack of the majority, so I would ask if there is a motion, one way or another, on the claim?
I'm willing to deny the claim.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion. Eric Dunn?
Yes.
James?
Sandy.
Cindy?
I'm Sandy.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Sandy.
And I'll vote yes as well. All right. Administrator mileage reimbursement, again, put on the agenda for discussion, and we'll open the floor up to board members to discuss.
There just seems to be a lot of mileage reimbursement going to student events, has been brought to my attention, and they were just wondering why all the reimbursement
There just seems to be a lot of mileage reimbursement going to student events. That's been brought to my attention. And they were just wondering why all the reimbursement would be necessary to go to student events.
And my question to you would be, first of all, I want to make sure that we understand that this has got to be a discussion, not just directly about...
Just in general.
Just in general. It's got to be a discussion about all administrators because technically they're all the same, lumped into the same. I'm not trying to defer anything away from our district administrator, just stating a fact that that's one thing that we have to keep in mind. So, my question would be to you guys is, okay, what do you, what does the board as a whole want as representation of our district at any event? Whether it be sporting or, let's call it extracurricular, because I'm going to lump everything into one because I think that that's the way it needs to be. I don't think you can pick and choose between a music program that might be in Deerfield and a football game that might be in Cottage Grove or whatever. So, my question would be to the board, and I think this will sum up what you're looking at, is what do we expect of our administration to be at extracurricular activities? And if so, if we say we expect some sort of representation there, then my next question would be, okay, how is that decided as to who it would be? And what if, like, let's take athletics for instance. I would expect our, our athletic director, athletic director to be at events. Okay? So, if our athletic director cannot be there, then if somebody else goes and they are representing our district, which, you know, we can argue a little about representation of our district, how are we going to reimburse that person? And how are we going to say, "Well, yeah, you can go here, but I don't want you to go there. I'll pay you to go to this, but I won't pay you to go to that." How do we, I just want clarification. I don't care what we decide tonight, makes no difference to me whatsoever. I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page and we're clear about what our expectations are and how we're going to compensate anybody for doing, for lack of a better term, their job. So, that's what I'd like to hear from everyone.
Well, I don't think that, you know, like, with the athletic director position, I think it's different in the sense that they are evaluating people and they could evaluate, you know, coaches and things like that. And away from home, I think the position is a bit itself different than the rest. I don't think we need, personally, I don't think administrators are necessar- are necessarily needed at all events. Home events, if you choose to go to home, that'd be great. I mean, yeah, it'd be great. It'd be great to have administration there as fans. That's why the away teams have their own staff. That's why we, we pay our own staff here, like our, you know, people who work, who work at the events. I don't think it's necessary to have administrators there, okay?
Then who does crowd control for our students when they're away? Who's in charge of those students?
Wouldn't it be the other student?
No, they're not in charge of ours.
No, they don't, during, during the playoffs, they'll set representatives, but no, there are no student, they're rarely representatives, or I'll call it a fan bus. And I think that's perhaps another thing you need to talk about, is the fan bus, but I also hope people talk about state also because that's, you know, the question is, is that a huge community event? And, you know, what does that, what does that signify? Because there's expectations, you know, many different, in many different ways. And I would also hope people consider that the athletic director is not the only person evaluating, you know, performance of people. The principal, the district administrator may be there for, you know, maybe not as obvious reasons, but with a, with a specific reason at times. And that's something that I think people don't always think about. And if, if you're saying that that's just the principal and the A D, you know, then what's the, you know, then, you know, then that's what it is. But understand that, you know, at a state event, for example, where, where it's a team qualification, that's tough for, you know, but some, some, I'll shit, but venues aren't stadium-based, if you will. They're more spread out. You know, you can qualify as individuals, not necessarily as a team. And so those also look different too. And so just keep that as perspective.
I think, Tom, if we look at the, the, um, policy, it says, "While traveling on approved school district business." So what you're asking us is to list what we would consider to be approved school.
I wouldn't say we need to define it, yes. But the contracts read differently also. I just want to point that out. The administrative contracts read differently. Not that that, that's not to be a debate, that's, you know, important clarification, but the, the contracts supersede the policy. So I'll just point that out as written, which says...
So we don't, we don't really have all the information here then?
No, yeah, it's, they're both there.
They just said that we're supposed to help all the administrators together, but now our, the contracts are different, so how can we do that? That's, I guess, my own view is kind of...
Well, I think you see the contract is different.
That contract language is the same, that if you're doing school business, administrator will be reimbursed.
All, all the contractors have the same language. Okay, all the administrators have the same language in their contract.
But it, but it's not, it's not the same that's in the policy.
Right.
How is it different?
It's, uh, page 12 is the administrator reimbursement language. Please understand that, you know, people say this is the priority, you know. I understand that, that's important too.
So in, in the policy, we're looking at approved?
Yeah, I think that's dealing, quite honestly, Jim, that's probably dealing more with day-to-day, like, I'll, I'll call it the 7:30 to 3:30.
Yeah, trips, trips to the...
Black Earth, the Maysa.
W A S B. Yeah. Or, or, okay, let me finish that. That we're, the words that I focus on are, in the policy is approved and the words in the contract authorized.
Shall also. And, and actually, I mean, as they're different words, I would still tie them together. I, I really, I would, even though they're two separate things, I would still tie them together.
I think if we looked them up through the source, they would probably be mentioned side by side.
They probably would. So my question to you, or not to, to the board, is, okay, so, we're saying allowed or authorized? And now we're questioning what we, what we have approved for authorization or whatever?
I don't think we've ever been asked before, so I don't think you can say what we approved in the past.
You might not have been asked, but when you vote on disbursements and they, and they are, and there's mileage in there, you're approving it, therefore you're saying it's okay what you've done. I mean, indirectly, that is, you know. So I just want to get to the point where we say, okay, you know what, I don't want you going, I do not want to pay X to go to this thing or whatever. I, so that we're all clear. If you go, you're going as a fan. I'm not going to pay you. However, that being said, like I said, I don't have an issue with that defining that. What I do have an issue with is, let's say, an administrator goes as a fan and something happens, I don't care what it is. Somebody gets hurt, somebody, uh, you know, fire drill, uh, somebody sets a bomb off in the, you know, in the locker room. If they act as a school official at that point, what, my question is, what are you going to do to reimburse that school official that's acting on our behalf at an away event? What are you going to do if that situation, it may never ever happen? But what are you going to do? Because I'm, I'm saying, if you want to say you don't go there, fine. We won't pay you to go there. But if you act as a school official, we also have to have what we're going to do if something happens. Or what if, um, Rich is working, or, or, let's keep names out of it. What if our athletic director is at an away game as a fan? Because we're saying we don't want representation at away events. Say he's there watching the game. Their athletic director comes up and says, "Hey, by the way, I see that in basketball, in girls' basketball, we're going to be playing each other, but there's an issue, you know, can we change some times around?" Does our athletic director at that point say, "You know what, I'm off duty. Call me tomorrow." Now you and I, all of us know that's not going to happen. But my question is, okay, if that doesn't happen, how do we reimburse them? Are we going to ask them to say, "Okay, you're going, you're going for free? And if anything creeps up, school-related, well, you need to do that for free too, even though, you know, you really, you make enough money, you don't need, you don't need this extra..." That, those are my questions. I don't care how we do this, but...
Well, one of the things, Tom, I think as a public official, and speaking, as a former public official, that if I was in the grocery store and ran into a parent, I'm going to talk to that parent.
I agree.
Whether it's going, whatever it's about, it might be about school, it probably could be about the student if they want information. I'm not going to go home and write down my mileage.
Right.
Because, because that's my job as a public employee, to interact with the public, and, and hopefully be able to help them out. Not, not to avoid those situations because I'm not going to get paid for it, but to really be a part of the community, even if it's the Wisconsinites community, without need for reimbursement. I would say if I'm going to a, a, as a school employee, as I did many times. I went many times to track events. I went, uh, well, most of them were on the track, so, and cross-country events. And even during that time, I did a school function at that event, whether it be interacting with a parent generally, is what it was. I was there, not as a school person, but I wasn't going to not be a school person if the, if I needed to be.
And I don't think anybody here would either.
One of the things that, uh, and I'm not certain of the language now in the handbook related to state events, but the previous contract had stated that if a team made it to the state level competition, then any of the coaches who had coached that particular, uh, sport, example, volleyball team, sorry, the seventh grade volleyball coach would be allowed to go to the tournament.
Okay.
Alright. Because showing them that that...
Triples down.
Exactly. I mean, if you want definitive events, I think what you do, I would suggest that any, any state event, because that is a higher level of exposure, alright? True, you're, you're still there as a fan, but at, at state meets, I think that exposure is, is much more important than going, for me going to Marshall and watching a track. That's, that, so that, I would include that at those events. The tenants at state, not only athletic events, but state music. And if you've never been to state music, that is the blast.
That's why I said extracurricular.
The best musicians in the state performing for free. I mean, it, it, it's, it's great. But once again, it's a state level, forensics. We have teams, other than the sports teams, that go to state in a lot of different things. FFA, as state type of events, so...
Okay, back to it then. How, who's going to ride herd on the kids when they're at an away game? Who is responsible? Who does it right now?
If there's, if there's an administrator from the school, they will generally step up and say, "Hey..."
We've made it a priority at sectional finals. You know, for team events, we've made that a priority. That, that would be, we also travel, I mean, I've been at several events just while, although, you know, I would say, part of it depends on the team, that's what makes it a little bit difficult. You know, some of our teams have a lot of support, others, others of our teams don't have any support.
Yeah, I was going to say, example, a football team plays at Point At, okay? Is, is the, does high school administration, district administration have a protocol that assigns someone to crowd control for that particular trip going to Point At?
No.
In the, no, in the last, since, since I've been here, we've tried to make it to, to have an administrator at a post-conference or postseason event, if at all possible. That's been our goal.
So, and, and I can, and I can understand that too, postseason, that's a good way to describe that. Generally, more students are...
Could be more students, or supporting the students. I have a group of students that are achieving highly. The challenge, like you said, is, you know, and we have some sports that don't have any home use.
Anytime that there has been a sectional or regional or higher game, that there is a number of students, Rich and I sit down and say who's going to be there. It's almost always him or both of us. If he does not go, I will go. And it is understood that one of us will be controlling the crowd if there isn't anything going on.
But that's only at the sectional level? I would say that that would be, if we want to make it, you know, official, I would say that would be...
I just want to define things. I just want to make sure that there's no more gray area that somebody can call up and say, "Why in heck are we paying somebody to go to such and such?"
So, I think that more representation you have at any school event, we should pay them. They are there representing our school. They are doing a job. They're going to get asked by parents multiple questions. It's important for them to be there. And as a parent of an athlete or FFA member or whatever, I'm glad they're there. And I think they should be paid to be there.
It's not like it's millions of dollars.
No.
It's peanuts. And they take their time to go and I appreciate it.
You ask these people to represent and, you know, spread out and go to all these different events, and now you don't want to pay them to do that? I, if they just, it's important for them to be there. And I just, that's my opinion.
Does each event though have the same amount of participation by administration?
I have no idea.
Example, a, a, a boy soccer game as opposed to, um, girls' basketball? Maybe, maybe...
How, how can we define that though as to, instead of saying, "Well, I want to go see that," and not that, it's more, "Do I have time to do that?" I mean, how do we know what their personal lives might entail and the fact that they can or can't go? So how, how, how do we micromanage that part of it?
But if they have the interest and the time to do it, let them go and pay them. Tom, can you just take a moment? I'd like you to comment on what Jim said though about being at the grocery store, being always on, you know, being that public figure. Both of your opinions were very, very different. And it's just kind of like, people rebuttal there. I just kind of want to hear your opinion on what Jim said of whether you're out in, in a game or out at the grocery store. You're a public official, someone is going to come up to you and they're going to want to talk business. If he's out at the grocery store on his personal time, he's not going to go and mark down his mileage. And one of your concerns was that if we're not paying them at a, at a game, then if they're acting on business official, or acting as a business official, you know, is there ramifications for us or anything else?
To me, they're two separate things. And again, I'm just one voice of seven.
Yeah, no, I'm, and I understand that. I'm just asking.
My thing is, is that if we want, you're always going to get it, we get it as board members. We can't go anywhere in Black Earth or Mazamini and not get talked to. It happens every time. Finally, that's what we're on your board. Administrators, it's probably the same thing. If they go anywhere in town, they probably get questions. To me, they're two separate issues. And what I'm really, what I'm really leaning towards or trying to say to you guys is, do we want representation at events? That's really what I'm saying.
And that's not, that's not what our question is either.
Okay.
Yeah, our, our question is that should... Yeah. Our, our question is that should there be, should there be, should there be reimbursement for selective events?
I think it's tough for us as a board to say selective events. I think you have to say extracurricular activities. Because if you say Mark can't go to, what's your daughter's soccer? Mark can't go to a girl's soccer game and get paid for it because his daughter plays. You know, if Asta's son played football, Asta, you, we will not pay you to go to any football game because your son plays football. You know...
I think what I, where I'm coming from is that, is that the attendance at those, at those particular games, is our other sports going to get that same amount of attendance?
Do they get it from the board?
Or are you, are you going because your son or daughter's playing?
I guess we have to trust them to know that they're there as a representative of the, of the district.
If, if you're there, they're going to represent the district.
What, what this really boils down to is, and, and I'm sorry, I'm going to pull Mark into this. Because what this really boils down to is Mark put in for probably one or maybe two soccer games. And one of them, his daughter wasn't even here. I mean, that's, that's what I'm hearing. You guys can frame this however you want. That's what I'm hearing. And we shouldn't pay Mark because he was there, because his daughter played. That's what I'm hearing. And if that's what you guys want to do, fine. What I'm saying is, we got to open it up. It can't be a personal thing because one guy did something or whatever you feel, however you feel, I don't care. Let's narrow this down and get to the point of, this is what we're going to do. If we're going to say, we don't care about extracurricular activities and having representation there, fine, then we say it. And we don't pay any administrator below a sectional level or playoffs or whatever you want to say, or I don't know how you would do it for music or whatever, solo ensembles, whatever.
Which are basically sections.
Okay. Okay. You know more about the music stuff than I do as far as how it goes. So my point is, if you want to do that, fine, then let's define it. And from this point forward, that's what we're going to say. We don't, we will not pay you. If you want to go as a fan, you can, if it's below a sectional level. I got no problem with that.
There isn't use in me to do it. Take the bus.
There's been one athletic bus in seven years minus the two state trips.
I'm taking the one. If you're an administrator, you can go on the bus with the kids.
The point is, there's been one outside of state.
No, no, not a fan bus. No bus.
Why, you want the administrator with the coaches? No, no, I'm asking. I'm really interested in hearing. Do you think that the coach that's getting ready for a game wants an administrator on the bus?
What would be the difference?
What, what goes on on those buses? They don't want the administrator there seeing them.
What goes on?
Or...
Look, before you said that you were going to the, to evaluate the coaches, so that's part of it.
Could be, right.
But you don't do that with the kids on the bus, pumping those kids up to play a sport.
Here's my question. So as a school member, I can put in for mileage reimbursement as well, right? So if I...
No, you're an elected, elected public official. Different situation.
So I can't...
It's covered.
It's covered. It's the rest of us.
If we were, if we were to go to a WASB convention, yes, I think we can get paid for it.
There's a per diem, there's a per diem, there's reimbursement for doing board business.
So athletic events, oh, okay.
Do you want to put in for it?
Well, I'm...
Go for it.
I certainly wouldn't put it down.
I mean, I go to football games as a parent. I go there to watch my son. I don't go to basketball. I don't go to baseball. I don't go to volleyball. I don't. And it's not because I don't want to support the school. It's that I donate a lot of time to this school and I can't do everything. I try to make a few here and there, but I go to every football game because I'm watching my son. I'm there as a fan. I'm not there as a board member. So I wouldn't put it down.
And, and that's the personal, personal choice.
Correct, correct, correct.
As a principal, I never wrote one thing down because I was there as a parent and, and a fan. And, and if my role as a principal or teacher was needed, I did it. But again, that was my choice.
And I, and I do know that our district administrator has not put down every single event that he has attended. Because I know that many football games, we've been seen together and I know he wasn't putting it down, so.
Do you think that since there was no, it doesn't say discuss or possible action on this particular...
I would get a consensus and we can put this on the next agenda for official action.
But I, I, where I stand is with the, with the sectional level. Because it doesn't apply to forensics, applies to the music, applies to so, almost the whole thing.
Yep.
I, I may be missing something, but...
Well, there's always going to be those one or two things, but, you know, like chess club. I don't think that's a sectional for chess club.
Aaron, can we make a... Yeah. Can, can you throw out the numbers that will tell us what we pay in mileage reimbursement for employees running back and forth to Maisel and Black Earth compared to what we're paying our administrators for going to athletic events or just extracurricular activities?
You mean, do I have a number on the top of my head?
Yeah.
Not that good.
Okay.
Dale, Dale, you drive back and forth between the schools. Are you putting in for mileage when you go from Black Earth to Maisel back and forth?
As well as our other traveling staff members that go between buildings, not even every day.
About half of which...
Well, we have educational assistants that travel between buildings.
I would, I would still argue that those are two separate issues. I mean, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I'm just saying as a presenting story, what, what, how many dollars are we talking here?
Oh, I know it's not a lot.
Two thousand dollars a year?
I know it's not a lot, but if there's an issue, let's get it defined and put it, put it down and say, this is what it's going to be. That way, after this, there's nobody that can call and question us and say, why is somebody getting this? Because it's in our policy.
Well, and there's still going to be times where you're going to be directed to go do an evaluation, things like that. You are directed to do one.
Remember with the direction, but understand, when board takes action, then that's all open records. So you've got to be, you've got to create a balancing test. And the balance of what do you want the administrators to do? Because as a team, we've said this is important. As a building, they've said it's important. And those decisions are made every day without consulting. Now, there, there's times where, you know, my roles as district administrator with the board president, or if I can't get ahold of somebody else, the vice president, you know, you know, then, then we talk. But, you know, understand that directing creates a whole nother level of responsibility on the board's end. And if the board accepts it, that's okay. But understand that, that changes. Because if you're directing me to evaluate somebody, you know, that changes the dynamics of the evaluation.
I don't think...
I, I use it, that was the example that I heard. And I can clarify, but I'm, I'm, what I'm saying is, you know, that directing to do an evaluation is, is a pretty dynamic statement.
I don't foresee that in the policy.
Well, I don't, but it was mentioned, so I, I mean, I'm...
He should be able to go to any event and do any evaluating that he wants, whenever he wants, can get paid for it. What I'm trying to get at.
I concur. I mean, my, my opinion on this is, we should just trust our administration that if they're going to, if they, that whatever they're putting down, it's because of board business, or, excuse me, school business. That, that's my opinion. I, I, to me, even going to the sectional thing, which I guess I can kind of support a little bit, but to me, it's micromanaging. And I think we need to trust our administration that if they're putting something down, there's a reason for it. That's my opinion.
One of the things I'm, I guess I'm just, I have a question on is, it seems like there's a contradiction between what is approved because we're there for crowd support versus being a fan and being part of the district. When it was first discussed and the first to start of this tonight was that it seemed like somebody had to be at a, at an outing, an away game, to be a crowd support. But then it sounds like there's not really somebody specific doing it, and it's not to all activities?
I don't think that that was a very good example personally, crowd support. I think that there's definitely different reasons that people go to events. I think evaluation is one of them.
At section of their state, they, they expect people to be there.
Yeah, I can see that.
But even, again, compare, comparatively, you know, the, the other aspect is how do you support all our students and things that maybe they only do one thing? How do you, and, and that's the hard part. And I understand why, why people would struggle with the question when they're asked, when people are asked, well, why is this happening? And yeah, I think anybody should be able to, you know, explain why they were there. There's a couple of times I went to away football games. First game ever was an away game of two of our football coaches. Wanted to see it. Wanted to be there to support the program. You know, there were three times last year, right, wrong and different, I was the only administrator at a regional finals, sectional finals, and state semi. Right, wrong and different. And that's why I think part of the balance is, if we think about only one person, because all of us have conflicts. Things come up, things happen. And honoring and believing that those are authentic. And so that's why the higher you go, and, because I get it. And sometimes people say it costs twice as much. Understood. But on the other hand, you could look at it as twice as much support. And I think Tom's right. You know, just let's be clear. Let's do it.
There are people on the contrary that I've spoke to and they'd be like, wow, Mark was at our baseball game the other day in wherever. That's awesome. They thought it was great that he was there. Showing representation, showing support for the team. Why not pay him for that?
And my only question would be, if we put, let's say we go with Jim's suggestion, which is sectional above. Let's, let's say, or, yeah, sorry, sectional above. Let's just say, let's take an example. We're going to do this across the board, administrators. So let's just say that there's an issue with, I don't care if you call it a coach. You could say it's our music director. You could say it's...
An outside entity, yes, a community member. You may need to be doing...
Could be anything. Now, if we need an administrator there, for whatever reason, doesn't matter, for whatever reason, does that mean that that administrator has to come to the board to ask permission? Because if we do it the way you're talking, yes, that's exactly what it means. He has to get a consensus of the board that it's okay, or I shouldn't say he, they have to get a consensus of the board to attend an event below sectional.
Only to be reimbursed for expenses.
Yes.
Not to attend it.
No, not to attend it.
To be reimbursed.
Yes. So now if somebody's...
This is really good information for me to know because I had zero, this is the first time I ever heard, I had not once in seven years, ever, put in for any, anything to get reimbursed for any activity. I had no idea. So thanks for letting me know.
So my question still goes back to, let's just say that we are going to ask an administrator to do a job, regardless of what it is, whether it's evaluation, whatever, and it's below sectionals. Are we going to ask them to do that at an away, and, and at a away game? Because at, at home, it makes no difference. They, they just come. Are we going to ask them to do that and not reimburse them?
So are we asking them to do it?
Not now, because, not now.
So if you're asking them to do it, would you mean that you're asking them?
Or it needs to be, or...
So they can put it for reimbursement if we're asking them to do it?
Okay, let me rephrase it. It needs to be done. Didn't necessarily come from the board. Just needs to be done. Let's take a baseball coach, for instance. Okay? I hate to bring that kind of thing up, but let's take a baseball. What happens if there's an issue? Similar to the one we experienced. And we don't have an administrator there. Or, or whatever, however you want to say, or we need to have an administrator at the next, because we heard this rumor, okay? So now, are we going to direct our administrative staff to have somebody there to do this evaluating, regardless of whether it's home or away in that case? But now, what we just did is we just directed our administration to evaluate an employee. Guess what? They now know that they're getting evaluated. So maybe now, oh, I know that somebody's going to be here, so I better really watch. I, I'm just, and I'm throwing out scenarios because I don't want a gray area. I don't, I, I want us to be very clear about what we're going to do.
One of the things I think is overlooked is the, is the, is the supervision and crowd control that's provided by the, by the opposing, or by the home team.
I agree.
The home team. And in a, in a situation describing, it was initiated by the home supervisor. Right. So, so that the other school did not have an administrator at that particular game. So, and it's still got to take care of because, you know, because, because there was someone in charge. And it wasn't a member of that school district. So, I don't know. I think we need to move on, Tom. I mean, just, I, is there consensus to have it on the next agenda?
I'll, I'll just put it on the next agenda. It'll be on the next one. I want, let's get a definitive answer, I guess. Okay, we'll move on. Do you have a motion to accept the donation from Herb Cole Educational Foundation in the amount of $3,000 in recognition of the selection of Dawn Schlick as a Cole fellow? Thank you. And a big thank you to Dawn again, and a very big congratulations. This is a huge honor for our district and for her specifically, so. All right, Jim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes as well. Student, discuss possible action to approve an open enrollment alternative request. Turn the motion. So move. Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. Discussion?
No, that's the newer one.
Yeah, it's the new...
Past the deadline.
Yeah, when it's past the deadline, it's now called an alternative. Yeah.
Right. There's still an immediate deadline, but then you can do it. There's the, a list of seven exceptions. The seventh one is the best interest of the student.
Used to be called open enrollment exception. Now it's just called alternative. Anything to change any?
The discussion? Kim?
Yes.
James?
Yes.
Sandy?
Yes.
Cindy?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
I'll vote yes as well. Annual review of board goals. So these were the goals that we set in October of 14. Take a minute to review and... Take a minute to review and if there's any discussion or if we want to get any information based on our goals or if we want to adjust any of our goals. We can do that now, or we can do it at the next meeting or whatever the board decides that they want to do with us. So, to me, the first two, I would like to see at the next meeting where we're at curriculum-wise. Mark, if you could get that from our curriculum director as to where we were, where we're at, that would be good, in those two specific areas. Yes, she did, but I want those two specific areas. Those are the ones that we decided we were going to be focusing on. And I'd like to know what our... That was a general overview. I'd like to know specifics on where we are in our overall student achievement. Have we been closing gaps? C is pretty much numbering that we've done that pretty well. On both one and two. Is there anything else that anybody would like to see?
If I could be, is there, has that been a discussion in the past, this last year? Does that mean part of it was...
With the parking lot driving today.
Yeah.
The one that's...
Parking lot, absolutely.
Right.
And the roofing, we've talked about roofing.
Well, looking at the one... Who's going to fill the side versions too?
Right. I mean, like, Mark said, you got the roof done, and if you get the parking lot done, you're two big ones that you're going to sit over here at. So out of five, we probably will spend some more time probably in August.
And the five-year plan's got to run, thank you. If you didn't get it done this year, things won't back.
Because of the front grounds where things were at, we didn't know what we had. There's always that.
What they have with the pavement, have they aged back that became part of this?
No, I think I would say that three through six should be yearly, should be yearly goals, of course. Because, you know, as opposed to one and two, which were specific, three through six are not so specific, but yet still give us some direction.
Yep. Yep.
Do you want to spend more time at the next board meeting, talking about what those would look like?
I would say, let's spend more time in our August 10th, depending on what that agenda looks like. Because I think the 27th is going to be...
It's on my microphone, so I don't... Yeah.
So, I would say to the board, let's put this on probably August 10th meeting. And I would say to study this, and if you have questions between now and then, get them to Mark or I, so we can get you answers. And think of anything three through six that you would like to either work on or have a comment on or whatever. Is everybody good with that? All right, future meetings, committees, any... You got policy?
I have a policy. We can do it. You got that meditation for me?
It's almost there. Just far away.
So, we've got employee relations at six?
Six on the 20th. That is correct.
On the 27th?
20th, it should be the 20th.
Should be the 20th?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so the first one that says employee relations, that should be the 20th, not the 27th.
Once I get it.
Good? So, policy at six o'clock? Policy's at six on the 27th?
Yep.
All right. I would also like to know if the entire board can make an August 3rd meeting? That is a Monday, but it's between meetings?
Yeah. And you'll know, I'm not going to be here.
Can everybody make an August 3rd meeting? Okay, I have the gentleman from that handout I gave everybody last week, Bob Butler from Wasby. I have him coming in, and I'm going to call it a board workshop. So, if everybody's good with that? We'll just do, probably, I don't, we'll talk to Bob to see what his schedule is, but I would guess seven, 6:30?
Yeah.
Maybe, I mean, if everybody wants it earlier, we can probably do it earlier.
I would suggest six or six thirty.
Okay. Six? Six, we'll work with Bob to get six o'clock?
Yeah.
That will be an open session, just so everybody knows. Yep. That's... Any other committees that need to get together?
That right now.
All right. Do you have a motion to adjourn?
I do have, I do have one thing.
Go ahead.
Since we had talked about it at a previous meeting about start time for the board meeting.
Yep.
I did review the annual meeting minutes, and I don't, I could not find anything related to the...
Seven hours, I can try to look back.
Starting times of the board meeting, so...
I believe it's, I can find it, Jim. I mean, it's, you know, you're almost at the end of the year. That's ideally when you set it.
So I think we should have a discussion.
I'd be happy to. Yeah, wouldn't bother me to move it up a little bit. You know, back when it was, remember when it was eight o'clock?
Oh.
But then it was heavily, I mean, this is a heavily farming community, especially back then. Not so much anymore. I mean, not like it was back in 15, 20 years ago. So, I'd be happy to look at that. Yeah. Do you want to discuss it at the next meeting? You want to discuss it at...
I won't be able to.
Let's wait until August 3rd, or 10th, I mean, 3rd. Good? Well, I'd rather have the whole board here, so August 10th, we'll put that on there too. All good? Okay. Do you have a motion to adjourn to executive session pursuant to state statute 19.85, parent one, parent C, for the consideration of employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. When executive session ends, the school board meeting is adjourned. Thank you. Do you have a second? Thank you. Jim?
Yes.
James? Sandy?
Cindy?
Kim?
Yes.
Isaiah?
Yes.
And I'll vote yes.